Ok everybody. So today I'm gonna make a... Today I'm not gonna make anything abandoned. But I'm gonna make Canterbury City Council building. It's now it's a abandoned building like in 2025. And 2024 it was a building and 2023. But I'm gonna make the open version like when it was opened so... Yeah, I might make a video where I'm gonna show you how to make it abandoned. Or you can just make it on your own. How you might think or you can just go to Canterbury, take pictures of it and you know. Just build your own. So. We have the delete of our blocks. First thing what we will need is this. Now actually this. Um, brick wall. This. We will need some of these doors. Actually eh let's do that. Now let's do these doors. Oh. We will need some dark glass. Something like this. The black ones. And then we will close this. Go onto here and get one of those. And for the roof we will need. Some of these. And some of these. So these are how alright let me just turn it to daytime. Alright so these are the blocks what you will need. These are the dark ones or the very dark ones. So you need these. This. 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 This and this. Okay. Let's start. In three, two, one, let's start. Okay. So we will need to start by placing one. So basically. One, two, three, four, five. Six. Six blocks. Like the six blocks and three of these. Then add a seven block then go up, go between these, go up again. And then leave the top like that. Then what you would need to do is go like this. Then put this down. Then put this here. Put this down. Like that. Then for this we will need to put loads of glass like that so. One, two, three, four, five. Five glass. And then you just repeat it. Like that. And do the exact same. Do four glass. Per block here and then do four again. Then yours should look like this. Then put one like this. Actually delete that, put even more. So now we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Block of that. Now what we will need to do. Is now do the top. Put these like that. Take your glass and put it like this. Oh yeah, I forgot to put this there. So just like repeat the whole thing but backwards. So just copy what I'm doing. Everybody does mistakes. Um, my bad. There we go. Now what you will want to do is put a slab here. It's kind of hard to put slabs on here. Like that. And put another stair. If you want I can show you a picture of the place what we're building. The place over here, we're building like this place. So in Canterbury, you can see the Canterbury name on there. It's a very cool place. Alright. Then just do the exact same thing. So now it should look like that. Hate putting down slabs. It always happens, this always happens like. Yeah everything is correct. Now do the exact same thing. Just follow what I'm doing. So now, so you should put one like there, right here. So you put one stair. And put it on top of your, you know. Wall. Then put a slab behind the stair and put a stair on top. Then put like and then I can repeat it so. One, two, three, four stairs. One, two, three slabs. So it should look like this. Now let's do the fourth slab. Then do the fifth stair. Then put this like that. So it should look like this. Then you should see this. If you see this, put, go up. So go like this. Oh my gosh. If you see like a square here, like if you see. So just go at the end, place. One like that. One, two, three, four, five. Yep, yeah. So it should be the exact same shape as this. Break one, go down, break one, go down. Break one, go down, break one, go down and go up. So it should look like that. Then go down, do that, go down, do that. Then go here. Grab this one. Well actually this one, if you can see the name. Press it. Go like that. Then break everything inside of it. Then. Go here and then get yourself a grey one. And do this. If you want you can do some shading like this. I'm probably gonna do some shading. Okay. Then go up here, turn it back to the. Okay. Then it might and then it will look like this. Then go over here. Then what you will want to do, actually go over and then write. Get the white one. And then write. Welcome. So welcome. Welcome. To. Then spell Canterbury. And then spell city. City. Cancel. This is how you spell Canterbury. And this is how you spell council. Okay. Now what you will want to do is go onto the side. Then go here, then place until you hit this. Go like that. Put this down. Then go here. More, more. Okay. Then reach the top. And then go side by side. If you hit one of these. Like that or like that. If there's no more space for you to go through, just go like this. Then place down. Three of these. Like that. Break the top. And then do this. Like that. And then put one like this. Then join it up. Like put one like this. And then go like that. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight of these black ones. Then you want to repeat that over and over again. I might add more blocks. If it's too small. Then add four of these I guess. Add one more block and then go up. Like that. Add one more. And then. Go back. Then grab your stair. Go like that. Go like that. Wait. Yeah. Go like that. And then go like this. Actually. Might be hard from the top. And add the windows like this. Then add. Two more. Then go like this. Add two more blocks. Break actually, oh my gosh, why am I doing so much mistakes? Sorry if I'm doing more mistakes. Like so much mistakes, I don't really do this much mistakes. Place it like this. Like two, two, um one, two. And two like one there, one there. And then two here and then two there. And this here. And then you have to break some blocks. So add one of these. One of these. One of these. One of these, so it should look like this. One of these. And then like that. Up. This. Alright. So it should look like this. And it actually look like this. Like the exact same. Then. You will need to. Just like that, so do this. Add four windows. One, three. One, two, three. Okay. Then go like this. Go like that. We might do the inside after. But we just, I'm just gonna do this first. Probably do like the front first, like yeah the front first. Probably the next video, yeah the next video. But the next video will be like the car place. The car place will be the next video. And then it will be the inside of this place. Probably a little bit of some outsider um walls. And then some car place and you know. Oh yeah, the electric house, sorry. If I said the third video will probably be the shed. It'll be the end of these um part of videos. Hate night time where you can't even see nothing. In survival it's good but like in creative you need to see stuff. Okay, then I done that. Now, now we need to do this so. Look at this sign. Go up like this. Just go straight. And then add even more. To um this bit. Yeah if you see more over there, I done this building. But it looks poopy bro, like absolutely poopy. Alright, then add one more. So it should hit this, like the start of the thing. And ending. At this sign. Then you will want to do the exact same thing. Like that. Then do this. Then probably do it until, yeah like that. So this, so next to this window has to end with the stairs. So it have to look like this. We're gonna do at the other side where that might be the other video. Like, I don't know. Probably like the sixth video will be the other side. It's gonna be a lot of videos for this building. This might be the end. Yep, that looks like the end. Of the thing. Doesn't that actually look more better? Oh wait, right. Where everybody? To plug it back. Just checking if it's correct. Yep. Then put, delete these block. So two blocks, then after the two blocks break one, leave one. Break one, leave one, break one. Then place these. You should still have them. And then do the exact same on the other wall. We're gonna do some details after. Like the car park and dustbins. I'll just do, alright for now. Now I'm gonna do just one detail. One little detail I'm gonna do for now. I think this will work. This might be like the dog does bin or wherever. Might like, should it be the dog does bin? What should I do for a little detail? Like for the, actually what should I do for the mail, a letter box? You know what, might use a block for the mailbox. Hmm, I know what I can use for the mailbox. Might look noise, no. No. Let's keep it like that, that is officially the mailbox. Can't just see it. Yeah you put, ooh. Oh ho, I know which way I know. But you can't open it, of course you can't. Of course you can't. Of course you can't open it like that. Ooh. Yeah you can like that. Yes, yippie! Ho. Okay, we will try to keep it like that. Wait, you can put your stuff in there like, like my meat. Uh, what the signal, alright. I'm gonna keep it like that. Anyways, that is the end. I'm gonna make even more, so don't worry, don't worry. Making even more. What the hell? So, wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Alright. That's two more. Okay, now it's equal. Yep, that'll be the end of the video and. I'm gonna make details on it, don't worry. So like always, subscribe and do everything, subscribe. And hit the bell button, like, comment, especially comment and sub- specially subscribe. And like. And, yeah, please watch my video and my other videos. Uh, from a long time ago and you might like them. Okay, see ya.